Please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Charnow.
Here.
Councilmember Tolles.
Here.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Thank you very much. We have reports by Mayor, councilmembers, and town manager. Grady?
I have no reports for tonight.
No reports. Mike, anybody? I know you did some things this, over the last couple of weeks.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We were at the Elfies Playground Palooza on December 21st. It was a great time out at Four Peaks Playground. We dedicated the new playground area that the town put in, a playground totlot for two- to five-year-olds, and then another play area for five-to-twelve-year-olds. So it was just a fun time. Community Services did a great job with, you know, having arts and crafts and snacks out there and stuff. And I was also able to represent Noon Kuanis. We donated fifteen thousand to the town to pay for the little dual zip line that's out there. And it just, it's been a, the whole playground's been a big hit, from what I hear, since that day. So more than happy the town could do that project over there. We're looking forward to more things going over there. And we got one thing tonight we're gonna address as well. So it was a good time.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? No? I know some of you were at things I was at. So first of all, we did the first flush ribbon cutting, which was our restroom, in, which on New Year's Day, as I was walking around the fountain, I saw it getting a lot of use. And not only that, but people sitting there on the benches, and I'll meet you there, and that kind of stuff is very nice. We want to thank the sanitary district for that infrastructure improvement, which has now become an amenity for all of our residents and our visitors. We had, Fountain View Village had a winter wonderland, which they had a horse-drawn carriage. Christmas seems like ages ago, but they had Santa, and I think it might have been the real Elvis there, and some cookie making. And the thing that always strikes you when you go over there is the, you know, there's all these little kids and then some of the residents there. So it's a great mix, a multi-generational mix. And we had the Elfie, and like you said, we'll be talking about more improvements to the park, which is another way of showing that we need help from organizations like this. And then when we get into the item tonight, we'll talk about how we're getting other help on that, on the basketball courts. We had our second annual balloon glow, which we want to thank Phyllis Kern, of course, and all of those people that made that happen. The pictures online are just amazing, just thousands of people and a wonderful event. And we want to mention the fact that during this time of year, it can be bittersweet because we also, while we all celebrate, we also have losses. And if you've been to the community center, you see the trains that are set up there, and that they've been set up there for year after year. Ken Burling, we lost him right before Christmas. And he was the keeper of the trains, and he's been delighting the children and their parents and grandparents for many, many years. And I think some of his family has intentions to hopefully keep some of that going. And then, of course, today, we had the service for former Mayor Sharon Morgan, who's been just an intricate part of Fountain Hills for so many years. We wanted to extend our sympathy to her family and the appreciation for all that she's done for our community. Next, we have our recognition of Fountain Hills Leadership Academy. Like I said, Class Four members, we have their boards up here. And I think, Grady, I'll ask you how we're gonna do this. Thank you.
Sure. Mike, you're here, right? I thought I saw you earlier. So we had an outstanding class this year, again, another great class. And before the council is a listing of projects, the members of the class this year took on a number of projects that they thought were helpful. What you have in front of you is kind of a synopsis or summary of each of basically the class and some of the projects as well. Mike, did you want to come up and just say a few words, and then we can recognize the, and maybe Jeff, if you want to come up as well? Jeff Esposito? These were the last year's graduates, the previous years, and they took on the role of helping organize this year. Do you want to kind of describe generally the class and how many we had, and just up the microphone, please. Sorry about that.
Need to get you on the record here.
Yeah, I like to yell. This was Class Four, the Fountain Hills Leadership Academy. This year, we had seventeen participants in the class. It was a good cross-section. Many of them are here. I assume they're gonna let them stand in a little bit. But we have both young and old, a whole cross-section of backgrounds, old and new.
Who's who?
Who's old, yeah.
No one, no one wants to claim they're old. But one of the, one of the prime project or activities in the Leadership Academy is to work on a class project. And so, as Grady mentioned, we have each of those project boards displayed here. The handout that we prepared for you is specific to those that have what I would call a direct impact to the town. So there'll be more project boards over here than what you see on your sheet. That just says that some of these are great projects, but they're either tangential to the town or totally separate from specific town activities. So I guess we'll leave these up here if someone would like to look at those after the fact. The Class Three, I was part of Class Three, so Jeff Esposito, myself, Jess Clark is here. We were part of the organizing committee for this year's class. So some lucky souls in this group will have a meeting with us in April, and they will be part of determining the agenda and participants for Class Five. So I guess my input would be, it's a fantastic program. We consider this class a very successful endeavor. And my appreciation to both Mayor Dickey and to Grady Miller and his team for participating specifically in Week Two, giving the participants a complete overview of what the town's all about. So Jeff, I don't know if I covered everything, or if there's more to add to the record.
I would say let's just have them stand up and be acknowledged for Class Four. So just looking over the synopsis, does anyone have any questions specific about those projects that you might want to address to the folks?
Councilman?
I have a suggestion. The, I was just reading about the promotional video showcasing Fountain Hills youth. And it says, "We feel that this will help to draw a younger age demographic to the area," which is something we really want. Why don't you consider, why don't we consider putting that on the website and on YouTube, so others can see it?
Whose was that?
And the video that you made on the stroll and the glow has quite a few youngsters in it giggling, and it's really a beautiful piece. Thank you for that.
She's kind of a marketing whiz, so she does it.
She gets it. Thank you so much. Well, we really appreciate what you did, of course. And we invite anybody that wants to look at the boards that are on display. We do, I think I mentioned this before, but Vicky Dirksen had put together a whole kind of a booklet of all four years so that we could see. And I did this before when we spoke, but I picked out some of those to show how they've actually been implemented, or how they've started ideas for the town to follow up on. And there's more to come, for sure. And we also want to encourage people to apply for Season Five, because that's probably gonna be coming out any time, you know, like a Netflix series. And there's never a shortage of need and great ideas. The Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, the contribution that this has is immeasurable. Like we were mentioning, that the folks that go through the leadership, they learn so much about, you know, about us, of course, and about the sanitary district, and the museum, and the library, and all those things. And they become ambassadors for the town as they go about, ambassadors with facts, which is very important. Because as we know, we talked a little bit about social media and how it's important. And when you can get those facts out, and you can be cheerleaders for our community in a realistic way, and try to help, it's really, really a wonderful accomplishment, and we really thank you for doing it so much. If any of you would like to say anything, you're welcome to do that. Otherwise, we just have our appreciation. Thank you. Next, we have our call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards? We have no speaker cards. And next, we have our consent agenda. As always, if anybody would like to take something off the consent agenda and discuss it, we can certainly do that. Otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
For approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. So we're going right into the regular agenda, item number one, or eight A, which is a public hearing and consideration of a request for a special use permit on a golf ball fence. And do I open it now again? I'll open the public hearing. We'll hear a report, and then we'll hear from the public and from council. Thank you.
Mayor and council, good evening. Happy New Year to you. This is, as stated, a request for consideration and approval of a special use permit to allow a golf ball net. The town code was admitted several years ago to provide for these. We have certain height and location requirements typically for fences. But over the years, we'd learned that sometimes with these houses that are along a golf course, they have challenges with the golf balls that come into their property and cause them damage. And so this provides for modification to the normal fence standards to provide for these nets to keep the golf balls from harming the property. So that's what we're looking at this evening, is this request for 9045 North Crimson Canyon Road. It's the property in blue right here. That has requested approval, or consideration approval of this net. They have documented that they have had damage to their property because of golf balls that get hit and come into their property, and therefore requested this permit. Section 5.09 of the town zoning ordinance provides a number of standards that have to be addressed and met in order for consideration of the special use permit. Staff reviewed those standards. It's outlined in your staff report with the situation determined that they did meet all the requirements in the code for consideration and approval of the net. You can see on this illustration, see if I got the right button here. Excuse me, where the net would be along the back of the property. And this is the elevation looking from the golf course, again, at how the net would look from that side of the property. Notice, as with any other zoning type action, was mailed to all properties with three hundred feet. It was posted on the property and in the paper. We've had no concerns from any neighbors regarding this proposal. And so with that, planning and zoning board and staff are both recommending approval of the special use permit.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions? Oh, do we have any speaker cards? And any discussion? No? Thank you, John. I'll close the hearing. Maybe, maybe next year I'll have a handle on this. So again, there's no further discussion, then I can take a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there's several of these around town, and I, over the years, I've been to some of these homes that have incurred some of the damage from different golfers around town. And I probably contributed over the years to some of the, but, so anyway, with that, I'll move to approve a special use permit for the installation of the golf net for 9045 North Crimson Canyon.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a cooperative purchasing agreement regarding the basketball courts. Grady?
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and have Rachel Goodwin, our Community Services Director, give a presentation on this. This is exciting because in addition to this project, which will be a big enhancement for the neighborhood, we're receiving a matching grant, which will help pay for half of it. So with that, Ms. Goodwin.
That's correct. Thank you. A few weeks ago, at our, several council meetings ago, we talked about the award of the Arizona Sports and Tourism Authority Grant, which was a fifty percent match grant for the installation of a basketball court at Four Peaks Park. Do you remember that? That is one of the amenities we'd like to replace. We didn't have funding for, and we were awarded that grant. This CPA that we're putting forward tonight is to begin that construction. It is to actually begin the install. We'll be working, we would be working with General Acrylics, who is the installer that redid our tennis courts several years ago. So they're familiar with our parks, they're familiar with our system. And they are also, they have already surveyed the site to make sure that they can facilitate the timeline that we need for this project. So tonight's consideration is simply to approve that contract so that we can get the ball rolling.
Thank you. Do we have speaker cards? No? Any questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Rachel, the court, it'll be, what, north of the tennis courts?
Correct.
Right, kind of, and between, before the wash?
Correct.
All right. And is it gonna be lighted now or not?
It will. It will be lit. And that is partially why we chose the location we did. It can, we do have existing lighting there for the tennis courts, so that we're able to tap in and use that, so that we can extend the lighting to the basketball courts as well.
All right. Well, with that, I'd like to move approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement with General Acrylics, the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Aye? Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
You're probably just gonna stay there. Next, we are gonna be talking about the Community Service Department Strategic Plan. I think some of your commissioners are here.
They are. I'd like to thank, actually, thank a number of our commissioners and staff that are here tonight by the request to be part of this discussion, to be part of this presentation tonight. Because the strategic plan was developed and put together by staff with the help of our commission. And it's really not my plan, it's our plan, because everyone has had involvement in this. You do have a copy of the plan in your packet. I don't intend to go through it line by line tonight. But I did want to give you some background on how we got here, why we need it, and what we'd like to do with it. All right. So our, the Community Services Strategic Plan, why do we need a plan? The plan is really set forward to help create a unified vision. It helps us focus. It helps us decide what we're gonna put our efforts toward, we're gonna put our resources towards, where we're gonna put our time. We want to be everything to everyone. We were having this discussion today. But we do need to have priorities, and this plan helps us do that. It also really takes into consideration all of our different divisions. Community Services is a really big department. We're not just parks and recreation, but we're also the community center, we're our senior programs, we're now volunteers, we're our trail systems. We have a lot of things under our umbrella, not listed as, I mean, we're special events. That's what we do as well. So we have a lot of things, and we have a lot of different areas of focus. So the strategic plan is really intended to help us narrow that and make sure that all of the different divisions are working collectively. The plan also helps with public transparency and deliverables for our community, so our community knows what we're working on, what we're trying to accomplish. We can point to it as a way to help assist them in recognizing and understanding our objectives. So when they want to know where our money's going, what is our budget being used for, what is the plan for Four Peaks Park? What are the new, what are the improvements going in next year and the year after? We have a way to look at that and really help them understand that, too. So who did this and how did we get here? Actually, it was more than a year of effort from staff. So I really want to thank all of our staff. And that includes not just our management-level staff, all of our leadership staff, but all the way through to our part-timers. Our customer service reps were part of this process as well. So everyone had a chance to be part of this and chime in. And all of the elements were comprised and endorsed by the staff of every division. So we gathered several times as a full staff to review it, to solicit feedback, to give it a chance to digest. Everyone had a chance to do that, and everyone is on board with this plan. A final draft was, again, endorsed by staff, and is also provided to our town manager for review. And then it was vetted through both our Community Service Advisory Commission and our MMPC, our McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission, also who we have members here tonight. Our chairman of our CSAT couldn't be here tonight, Ron Rupert, but he did send an email, hoping that other commissioners could be here to cheer us on, and that the staff did a wonderful job, too. And it should be emulated throughout town departments. So that meant a lot to have Ron do, have that type of endorsement. Ron's been part of our commission for a long, long time. So this is something that he's really seen and endorsed as well. So what was the result? Well, one of the results we started with was a mission statement. Most strategic plans do start with a pretty, as I call it, a wordy-wordy mission statement, but it's, what do we, what do we stand for? And the Community Services Strategic Plan identifies our new mission statement as the following. "To enrich and provide an active quality of life for all residents and visitors through proactive community engagement, resolute stewardship of amenities and open spaces, and enhancement of the overall health and well-being of our town." That's what Community Services wants to do. That's our focus. That's our mission. From that, we define five visions. They're listed up here, and they have different focuses. But each division within Community Services has a part in each of these visions. Just because it says "provide recreation" doesn't mean it's just our recreation staff that does that. Our park staff do that. Our volunteers do that. Our trails do that. Everyone has a role to play in each of these. So it's to provide recreation that inspires personal growth, healthy lifestyles, and a sense of community. Expand and strengthen outdoor experiences and opportunities to contribute to the region's attractiveness as a place to live, work, and play. Optimize safe utilization of facilities, amenities, and open space. Actively seek progressive, future-oriented options for funding, operations, and programs. And to embrace a collaborative spirit and support teamwork within the department and the community. We felt that all five of these visions really spoke back to the town's strategic plan. It spoke back to the feedback that we've received through Vision Fountain Hills and other resources in our community. So we felt like these five were really the whittled-down versions of what we can contribute to that. So our next steps, we're to bring it before the council tonight for adoption and endorsement. Pending that, we would like to begin implementation. This plan is designed to be a three-year plan. So staff, commissioners, partner groups, and other stakeholders, we want to hit go. Provide regular progress updates for tracking and accountability. So much like our strategic plan for the town, we'll have updates to who's taking the lead on each of these areas, what progress have we made, what stumbling blocks have we reached, what dead ends have we reached, and where have we had successes. And then an annual update to council, or as requested. So that is our overall strategic plan. I'm happy to answer questions on it, or receive any feedback or changes you might have for it.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, we do. One from Bill Myers.
Thank you very much. My name's Bill Myers. I'm on the Conservancy Board, a group of about a little over ninety folks who do trails and things like that. Until recently, I was a member of the MMPC. And we had the fortunate experience of having Ms. Goodwin present this plan to us. And I can tell you, seven out of the seven members supported wholeheartedly. And the folks I've talked to on the Conservancy are also very much in favor of this. I think this is going to be a good way to have the Conservancy and the MMPC and the town get more done than we might have otherwise done. So I wholeheartedly support this plan. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Council? Any questions or comments you want to make? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel, I just want to commend you and your department, and everyone who had input and worked on this. I think it's a fantastic strategic plan, and, you know, I had fun reading through it. And, you know, we had a good meeting yesterday. I had a few questions on some things and provided some input. But I think it's very comprehensive, thorough, and I think it covers all the bases. I mean, it is a unique department, and a lot of different things going on. And as I shared at the Playground Palooza, you know, thirty years ago, I was named the first Parks and Rec Commission. And shortly after incorporation, well, we didn't have any parks. We didn't have any parks personnel at the time. We had a commission, and we kind of dove in. But there was no Golden Eagle Park, no Desert Vista, no Adaro Trailhead. You know, Four Peaks was actually land owned by the school district, and Fountain Park was owned by the developer at the time. So a lot has happened in thirty years, a lot of great things. And, you know, I've just been pleased to be part of some of that. And it's really, to me, a good wrap-up of what's going on and where you want to be. And maybe just one thing you could address, Rachel, and we talked about, this is basically for the next three years. I had brought up some things about maybe that are a little more long-term, like, you know, do we ever want a standalone senior center, youth center, that kind of thing? So maybe you could address a little bit just your thoughts on longer-range things.
Sure. We did talk about that yesterday, and in my mind, more is always better. We always want those types of things. We know that we are in a, in a bit of a budget crunch. We know that there are going to be priorities, and money's allocated where the council sees fit. And while those things may not be on the immediate horizon, I think we can start making decisions about how to look at those long-term, whether that's looking for alternate funding, whether that's looking for non-traditional outlets and resources. We talked a little bit about some of town-owned properties and where we might be able to develop those down the line. We are going to be, actually, we are underway right now with a bid for a master plan. So that's more of the amenities and hardscape, you know, what do we have, what do we need? Do we need more tennis courts? Do we need more ball fields? Where are we short? Do we have enough park space per capita for our residents? What are the trends coming down the pike? And does it look like those are needs that we have for our community? So we'll be working with that process to sort of dovetail onto this. So this is more the short term. What can we be doing in the next few years? And then the master planning will help us look more into that ten- or fifteen-year long-term future. So we'll be working with that as well. So yes, we want all those things. We just have to figure out how to buy, pay for them.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm glad that you mentioned the regular strategic plan and the Vision Fountain Hills, because a lot of times we find ourselves getting a lot of ideas or things that we want to do. And it's really helpful when, in the agendas or when we go after something, it says, hey, that's strategic plan, you know, five A, or that was what Vision Fountain Hills said that people wanted. And I know that those things change. But having this as this overall guideline is really, really important. And I'm glad that you mentioned the Parks Master Plan, too, because as you know, I want everything, too. So when people come with all these great ideas, Abachi and the Spartan, and the little libraries, little tiny libraries, and it's always exciting, and everybody's enthused. And to know if it would fit in with a plan that has had a lot of thought put into it and that is getting approved in many levels is really, really helpful when we hear those things, because, like you said, you want everything. You also mentioned the reality of the budget. It's not just whether we have a building, but it's also do we have the staff to, you know, we may start a program, but can we finish it, or can we properly staff it? You know, we had so many wonderful things happening over the, over the holidays. But I know every one of those evenings that, you know, I'm there with a granddaughter or something, it's a staff member that's there, too, on a Friday night. So we have to keep those in mind as we go forward with our budget. And we talk about the roads, and we talk about other items that we're gonna have in front of us, to try to keep this kind of stuff front and center. It's a challenge. And we really appreciate everything that you did. And it's also a wonderful example of the commissions. You know, we often probably don't take advantage of the talent and the people that we have on the commissions who are there and volunteering their time to help us. And this is a really good example of how that came together. So we really appreciate all your work. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I know this has been touched upon, but I just want to really reemphasize it. So the plan before you really is great in that it, one, the strategic plan model- So the plan before you really is great in that it, one, the strategic plan models our strategic plan, both in format, but also it has what I would call measurable tasks. It also has go-to people who are responsible for implementing those tasks in the plan. And also, we have the plan to come back and give periodic updates to the council, so I think that's really good. Those are all what I would call hallmarks of a really good, measurable strategic plan. And I think that Rachel and her staff and the, the two advisory boards are to be committed, because I think that there was a lot of effort and time that went into this, so. But anyways, I think that what you have before you tonight is, is a highly endorsed plan that I think is great. Rachel, thanks again to you and everybody involved.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion? Yeah, great work, Rachel. I just want to say that before I make a motion. The motion is to adopt Resolution 2020-04.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Next, we have probably Justin's up for this one, Cooperative Purchasing Agreement Regarding Concrete Services. Grady?
That's correct. The item before you is a award of a contract multi-year for concrete work. Our Public Works Director will give you more of an overview of what this contract consists of and what types of concrete services will be undertaken as part of this contract. Mr. Weldy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Not just myself, but all of the directors and the rest of the staff, we spend a considerable amount of time reviewing other governmental agency contracts. The intent of that is to do the best we can with the limited funding we have. The contract that we have before you tonight, we are using through cooperative use, but I should note that this particular contractor has made us aware of contracts that he has had over the last several years, or rather, they, it's not just a he, it's a they, and extended that to us to use. He has asked respectably that I do not use his name, and I will respect that. He is a resident in this town, he has lived here many, many years. He does a lot of contributions locally, and so we are shopping locally in a sense. The other partners do not live here and they do not operate their business here, they operate out of Mesa, but what he contributes to the community in regards to these contracts and the expertise that he not only shares with myself, but also with Kevin and his group to accomplish these projects is immeasurable in regards to time. That said, as you all know, we have been challenged for some years to get contracts that will make a measurable difference in our long-term budgets. The contract that we have before you tonight, I believe, is an excellent for that. Another government, the city of Scottsdale, went out for bid solicitations for concrete work. They received several bids, and after reviewing all of the bids and all of the pricing, they decided to award their contract to BenCon. We are delighted by this because it gives us the opportunity to use it. This particular contract, if approved by you tonight, will primarily be used for capital projects, and I have listed several of the capital projects in my staff report, and I'll go over a few of them. A good example is $150,000 will go to the Civic Center or the Library Event Center. The circle there is concrete, and it is cracked and heaving and creating challenges for us, and so we have a capital plan to replace that, replace that concrete with papers. The new street yard sign shop, they will be doing the engrade foundation and the slab for that. We don't have the final design for that, but my estimates are that that will be between, somewhere around between $25,000 and $30,000. Four Peaks Park, we just discussed that. We have $70,000 in this year's contract for our pathway. This pathway, which is currently under construction under the existing contract we had with them, will tie the two new playgrounds to the bridge, to the restroom facilities, and we are continuing onward to the west for the future location of the basketball court and other amenities. What this does, it is, allows us a usable pathway to tie these amenities to a parking lot and also to restroom facilities, and also the adjacent, I believe they refer to it as a soccer field, near the restroom facilities. Our annual sidewalk infill program, which is $200,000, we will do, will be doing additional concrete work on this contract that will include everything necessary to our pavement management, and we, we have a minor list for that, but we don't know what everything is until we really get into the weeds on that, and that is forthcoming. With that said, this contract is for $600,000, and that's based on known and unknowns. We have a little bit of contingency in there for each one of these. If we renew it for all of the options, it will total 2.4 million over the term of the contract. This will allow us purchasing power over the next several years at what I believe to be good pricing based on the market out there today. Before I close on this, I would like to note that this particular contractor, currently we enjoy a contract with them from the city of Chandler, which is expiring, and so Chandler went out to bid, once again competitive bid, and BenCon, I have been told, is also the low bidder for that contract as well. So we believe this is in the best interest for all of the town needs in regards to concrete. If you have any questions, I will certainly be willing to answer them to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this? Questions or comments from council?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have several questions. I had a discussion with Grady and our Finance Director, David, I think it was yesterday?
Yeah.
About this whole process, not just the amounts, but the process, and I'll get into that in a minute, but if we were to not piggyback on Scottsdale, how much more would it cost us?
Madam Mayor, council member, I do not have that answer. I can, I can only give you a hypothetical, which is not safe. Hypothetically, it could be more, and we only know that because of the last two or three bids that we sent out publicly, either through ADOT or on our own. The bids for that single project came in considerably higher than the engineers' estimates and monies that we had budgeted, and myself and the town manager and Rachel, we had to come back and ask the mayor and council to provide additional funding to complete the task at hand.
This goes out four years, and you have an estimate for cost. How can you estimate cost today for something four years from now?
Council member, I'm only estimating what we have in our capital projects, which shows the outline years in each of our budget books for that type, the things that we currently have, or capital projects that are in the works that will be coming forth as part of the upcoming budget. This is just an estimate. It's, it's not my intent to say that we're going to spend all of this money over the next four years. I would simply like to have the purchasing power to do so when and if the mayor and council approve projects moving forward.
So the projects, three years from now, four years from now, you would be presenting us with projects based upon the budget discussions, as using the CIP, is that correct?
Correct.
the ones we have before us, which add up to, it says 600,000, Myabicus said it was 575,000, but maybe Myabicus is wrong. These were determined almost eight years, eight months ago as part of the budget process. What I discussed with Grady and with David was the fact that things change. They change a lot. I have some difficulty making these kinds of determinations as to what we're going to fund eight months in advance. I also think the process could be improved by us as, as a council during budget time, looking at more than just these, and maybe we did, but my understanding is we've got a long, long list of projects that need to be funded, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Grady suggested, and I agree, that we should have a, when we have a retreat, we should discuss this, this process. I don't think the process works real well. I think there need to be some, some changes to it. I also wonder, even though you would be coming back to us each year with recommended projects and costs, you're asking us to agree now to what?
Tonight, council member, I'm asking you to approve a contract that will cover CIP projects for the remainder of this year, next year, and the potential outlying years as they're approved. So tonight, I'm asking you to consider approving the $600,000 contract that will primarily, right now, allow us to work on the rest of this year's projects. Mind you, you're correct. These capital projects don't total $600,000. I have a little bit of contingency in there for unknown items that pop up on a regular basis.
In, in determining the projects around budget time, what criteria did we use in selecting the projects?
Well, there, that's a little bit of a tricky question and, and a long one, so we'll just pick an individual project. Let's pick the Library Event Circle or the Civic Center. Over the years, after that was constructed, we had notable problems with the concrete. We have replaced a panel here or a panel there. We've done a considerable amount of grinding, and now it is simply so wavy that we, it's, it's not in the best interest to patch, quilt that work together. So we came forward with an estimate some years back, not just last year, and proposed that project with these papers. That is how we selected it. We brought it forward to the town manager, we discussed it, we did our due diligence, we did some cost analysis on it. Once it was decided, then it was put into a future budget. When it was put into a proposed future budget, excuse me, then we had a council retreat, and that's when we gave the council an opportunity to read, review, and hear comments from staff on that particular project. It was at that time selected for this year to be constructed, and so that's how that particular one is picked out. But for each one of the capital projects individually, depending on who is responsible for that project, Rachel or myself, possibly John in the future, we do an incredible amount of research on what is needed based on input from council members, from the mayor, from the town manager, from the residents. In this case, there are some projects that are from the pedestrian and traffic safety committee, and also from just basic observation of everyday operations for our streets and our parks and our facilities.
I'll put you a little further on the spot. If we were to approve $150,000, and only $150,000 for the Civic Center improvements, would that be your number-one priority of everything we've got to spend money on?
No, sir, it would not.
Can you, can you, off the top of your head, can you tell me what would be?
All of the, of the top priority within the capital projects list? It would be very, very difficult, but I would say that the community center concrete and the sidewalk infill would probably be near the very top of my list.
Well, and if I, and if I may, I'm sorry for interrupting, but it all, I mean, the concrete contract that you have before you has multiple departments that are also in that queue. So he was speaking from a public works director perspective. If you had asked the same question of Rachel, she probably would have told you Four Peaks, getting that concrete work there. She's also a big fan of, obviously, fixing the Centennial Circle. The key is that this contract that is in, for consideration tonight, does not lock us in for the entire four years. So if council's prioritization's changed on the items that you see, and we've been trying to sell this contract to you tonight, it doesn't mean that we're locked in to having to pay for the duration of that contract, the, the money and cash them out. So in other words, as your changes, as your priorities change, we can have this contract reflect what the reality is. So in other words, we're not locked in to the full term on this contract.
I, I understand that. I have no idea what my priorities would be, because I haven't been given a list of all the things that are needed that could be used under the aegis of the CIP. I haven't a clue. And, and here we are, eight months later. Yes, I voted for it, not, probably not knowing what I was doing, which wouldn't be the first time. I voted for it, but as I've stated in previous meetings, I think we need a more complete list of our priorities, and, and not just public works, so that we can make informed decisions. I'm not saying any of these aren't worthy, but I don't know that there aren't others that are more worthy. And so, again, I think the process is a bit of a problem. I got a follow-up email from our conversation, from David Pock, and David's email says that in FY17, we had 1.6 million, FY18, 1.1 million, FY19, 1.7 million, correct?
That was what was transferred.
Right.
This is, this is, just so everyone understands, this is what was considered surplus. This was the amount of the budget that we did not fully expend and then excess revenues over what was anticipated. So those numbers that Alan just mentioned were transferred per our policy at the end of the fiscal year into the capital fund for the next year.
And then we had the flood. Then we had Golden Eagle. And we had to take money away from other projects in order to be able to fix Golden Eagle. So the, the money is somewhat fungible. I think we have to have a different process to fully understand how we spend the money in the CIP, what the priorities are, when we set the priorities, when we review the priorities, and so on. Now, one last thing. I know that we're not married to, if we approve this, not married to the next three years, but I'm not sure it sends a good message to the citizens. I can vote for the first year, the Civic Center improvements and so on, Four Peaks Park and so on, but I don't particularly want to vote for a 2.4 million-dollar package, even if it's going to be coming back to us. I also am not convinced that the cost to us, based on what you said, would be significantly more, and in fact, in years two, three, and four, maybe we can piggyback on Scottsdale or someone else to get the lower, the lower prices.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, in three or four years, we could piggyback on a different contract, could we not?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, aren't the CIP projects somewhat prioritized or very prioritized?
Yes, in fact, the staff, we, we actually look at, we had a, a meeting today on, in fact, on this today. We looked at both capital facilities replacement projects and also what would be considered capital improvement projects. And the staff goes through the ones that do the Seminole, they, they do a ranking. We also, through direction that the staff receives from myself and also from the council, as an example, Mr. Weldy brought up the fact that due to the concerns that councils expressed over the last twelve months or so about pedestrian safety and traffic safety, we've really put a lot of emphasis on that in our capital improvement program. And so, again, these are policy guidance and directions that the council's given us, and it's filtering down into the organization, and the staff is coming back with projects that more accurately reflect that. But the good news is, we're also going after outside sources of funding through MAG, Mayor Corp Association of Governments, and through the federal government to help fund some of these projects as well. So they're not all general fund, funded projects. But there is, there is a process, and I'll give you an example. We've gone through, when we have the capital improvement program budget discussion, which will be coming up in March, in the prior years, the council's gone through, and they've gone ahead, and based on the projects that were in there, they've actually have readjusted it, they put some projects out in outer years. As an example, one of the projects that they, the council has killed recently, a couple years ago, was the monument signs or the, the Wayfinding Sign Program that was killed as a result of going through the, the vetting process that happened during the capital that was killed as a result of going through the, the vetting process that happened during the, the capital improvement program review. So there's a lot of, there, there are ways the council with policy guidance does that. But the discussion that Councilmember Magazine and I had yesterday, he's looking at having a little bit more, maybe a numeric or some other type of way of evaluating these projects, which is a little bit more systematic. And so that's going to be, we're going to have a discussion with the council at the retreat on that, if the council's pleasure is to do that.
Yeah, I mean, in a technical sense, I mean, and the staff report states, I mean, these are already approved capital improvement projects. We've seen this list and we've given our blessing to these. So in a technical sense, we're not really approving these projects tonight. We're just approving a contract to allow these projects to get done. And so, I mean, we've seen all these things in the past and said, yes, let's do them. And so then it's up to staff to determine, you know, the order of them and the, you know, sometimes we don't know the amount till we get bids or whatever. So, I mean, we're not really approving projects tonight. We're approving a contract to allow these already approved projects to be completed.
Mayor? Councilman?
I fully understand that, but that's only for year one. We don't know what the projects are for three, for two, three, and four, do we?
The short answer is no. We do have projects that are shown in the budget book for outlying years, but each year as the budget is adopted, and, and the town manager alluded to this, capital projects move around. They either go away, they're deferred, or they're bumped up and changed, increased, decreased. So, no, I do not know what will be in next year's budget.
The council member's correct, though. Usually in our five-year capital improvement program, usually always the first year is fully funded. Out years, the second year, there might be some projects that are funded, but to your point, probably years two through five, for the most part, are not fully funded. And so those, and, you know, th- those go through an annual review by the council and the staff every year and get adjusted.
Well, until we have an improved process and get a lot of, get some of these questions answered and see what the panoply, if you will, of projects looks like, very long, I for one would rather not, I mean, I understand we basically approve these projects and I'll vote for them. But I don't particularly want to be in a position of approaching $2.4 million, even though each year it would come back to us, until we've talked about the process and figured out how we go forward.
Thank you. When the projects come to us, that was, that's always the fail-safe. It's always kind of been that way because obviously we do it in February, March, and then who knows, you know, a flood or whatever, or different priorities. So when those individual projects come to us, I've always looked at that as the final step or the final say. Let me see if I'm interpreting the fact that we're going ahead four years correctly. You are convinced, and I'm assuming most of the staff is convinced, that this company has proven itself to us in a way that we are feeling assured that by approving a relationship with them for this amount of money, even if next year we only have $300,000 worth of stuff to do or the year after we have a million dollars worth of stuff to do, that the, your, your trust in them and in the fact that we're getting a value out of having this relationship with them is worth it, no matter what those projects are. Would that be fail, fair to say?
Madam Mayor, that, that would be correct. And, and I want to make a clarification. In each one of our contracts, including this one, which is in this packet, there is a paragraph in there that discusses that we will only move forward when we have approved funding and approved projects at that time. We're not locked into this contract amount. They did not bring this contract amount to me. I put this contract amount together after discussing it with other directors and the staff based on the needs for this year and next year. A short answer to your question is yes. They will honor the contract to the amount that we need done that year. In past years, the same contractor, different contract, did as little as $50,000 and did not complain about it. They simply came out and did the work when money and time permitted.
And again, though, you're, you think a four-year relationship with this company is worth it regardless of what the projects may be?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. So we're not necessarily approving the expenditure of $600,000 in year three. We're just approving a contract to perhaps allow that amount to be spent based on what we prioritize and what staff brings forward in terms of the projects. Correct?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, that is correct. The, the, each year's budget will dictate what we will be spending for that year. I'm asking for this year initially, and then in outlying years, we will be getting all of the projects approved through the process. And then for whatever projects are approved and the funding available, we will then proceed on the concrete portion with this contract.
Any other comments or questions? Would anybody like to make a motion? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, well, go for it.
May not take a second, but I'm going to move to approve the cooperative purchasing agreement, C2020-054 with Vincon Engineering Construction LLC in amount not to exceed $600,000 for the first year.
Is there a second? No? Can I get another motion then?
Well, I'll move to approve the suggested motion as written in the staff report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks very much. Thank you, Justin. Thanks, staff, for all your input on that.
You're welcome.
Our last item is professional services agreement regarding a couple of different projects. Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Mr. Weldy's going to give an update on the need to amend the contract with CK Engineering due to a couple projects that they've been engaged with. So with that, Mr. Weldy, you want to proceed with describing why we're amending these contracts?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, this contract amendment before you tonight actually has two parts. The first part of this is additional funding to address some drainage issues that we were not aware of as part of the original contract for the roundabout on La Montana, excuse me, Avenue of the Fountains in La Montana. We discovered during the design and after survey and some studies were done that we would most likely have ponding in the travel lane of this roundabout on a regular basis if we didn't address this. The engineering firm came back. We looked at it, the town engineer and I. We agreed for the additional $5,000 and for the scope, which is included in the packet, that this was fair. This is just going to keep this project moving forward. What I would like to let the council know is that currently that project, which is in a multi-year discussion and now in, in design, is at the 60% level. What that means is the design firm has sent the 60% plans to the town staff for review. We have reviewed and returned our comments to them. The town manager and I need to have some discussions in regards to the proposed landscaping, but that's not going to slow the process down. Very shortly, shortly, we will get the next set of plans that are just before they are sealed. And that'll give us an opportunity to review the last few little critiques and then get the plan sealed. And the intent is to go to bid and immediately start constructing it this fiscal year. If you have any questions related to the first portion of this, I will be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I will move to the second part.
I just have one. Is there a relationship between that and the Keystone project? Does, does one rely on the other, or they can just do whatever they need to do?
Madam Mayor, what we have done is we have asked the CK group to provide their CAD drawings to Keystone to make sure that whatever improvements they're making on and off-site will fit in with this project. So the two of them are working together to ensure that the progress for each of them are as seamless as possible with the known that we know.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, well, I'll wait and I'll ask first. Do we have speaker cards?
No.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
The next part of this comes from the direction and, and reports that we've received, feedback we've received from the residents and the pedestrian and traffic safety committee. The reports and the concerns that we were getting is that on Palisades, south of Fountain Hills Boulevard, but north of El Lago and even further north, north of Keith McMahon, in the area fronting the Safeways, the DJ's Pizza Hut, Burger King area, there is not a pedestrian mid-block crossing in that area. And it's a considerable distance to go either north or south on Fountain Hills Boulevard to accomplish this crossing safely. The second portion of this is with the same engineering firm to do an analysis of that area to determine what type or if it is appropriate to put in a mid-block pedestrian crossing. And so while we don't yet have the design, I will give you the basic criteria that drives this. This would be the hybrid standardized flashing beacons that are solar operated. There would be one for north and southbound on either the east or west side, but there would also be one in the center. Because Fountain Hills Boulevard in this area is extremely wide, we would need to put a safe haven where the, the stamped concrete in the median is at. And also included in this not only would be the advanced warning, yellow flashing signs, but we would also have luminaires. And what I mean by that is there would be a street light at this location that would light this exceptionally wide section of roadway for the pedestrians should it decide to go forward. But the first phase of that is to do an analysis to determine the feasibility that would include the possibilities, the locations, and, and cost to, to move forward with that, with the design and the implementation. If you have any questions about the second part of this, I will be glad to answer them.
Do we have a speaker card on that part of it? Any comments or questions? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just thought of something. Justin, would this study also include any changes to the, the medians or the traffic ingress and egress out of, you know, the condo projects or the Safeway Plaza, that type of thing? Or is it just strictly pedestrian?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, the assessment will in fact take all of the traffic patterns and movements and driveways and also the traffic signal at Palisades and Fountain Hills Boulevard into consideration. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty wide scope, and that scope is actually included in the packet and is attached to as part of the contract. But it, it will include all that. It is not likely, and I'm only speaking for myself, not for the town engineer or the town manager, that we would be moving any driveways to any condos or any businesses. That could potentially become exceptionally costly. And so we would look for an ideal location somewhere in the area that would minimize what work would need to be done onto the private property or the driveways attached there to those private properties.
I just know over the years, there've been a number, a number of fender benders right there in front of Safeway, you know, people pulling out, people pulling in. It's somewhat confusing at times, especially when there's a, you know, a lot of traffic and, and that kind of thing. And I've also talked to the town engineer about perhaps looking at the left-hand turnpocket northbound on Fountain Hills Boulevard, turning onto Palisades. It just seems that the cars back up beyond what the pocket there is. And, and, you know, especially in the morning with schools, high, high schoolers going to, to high school and stuff, it backs up into the traffic lane. So I'm just wondering if we could somehow include that or look at that in terms of cutting back the, the median and extending the left-hand turnpocket.
We can certainly ask them to look into additional storage for the northbound left turn to westbound at that intersection and see. They will be doing, as part of this, a pedestrian and traffic study anyway. They'll be counting cars and traffic, and they most likely, as, as I mentioned before, will be looking at that intersection. So there's a possibility that additional storage may be warranted at that intersection. I don't know that we would tie it to this, but we would certainly look at the data.
Thank you. Yes, councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This agenda item, I, I have somewhat of a problem with it because the one thing is talking about the roundabout for 5,700 bucks, which, you know, both of these are together. So I'm against the roundabout from jump, so that ain't my cup of tea. But in regards to the study, which, you know, I just love, big fan of studies and love giving money for studies, is there a way that, I mean, we kind of know that that area is dangerous, correct? I mean, it's, it's a dangerous crossing. Instead of spending the money to have a study, which I would think the study is going to show that there needs to be a device there to help people cross and everything, does it make sense to spend the $10,000, $11,000 on the study when what would be the price of what I thought was similar to what we have at the high school with the button, the pedestrian button that is touched and the light goes off? You can't put a traffic signal there, of course, because it's too close to the other traffic signal. So what would be the cost for going to study if we were to look into just striping that and putting up some type of warning system without blowing the 10 grand?
Madam Mayor, councilmember, I don't have a design and construction cost. We, we have rough numbers that we've looked at based on the request for information to add a very similar system on the Avenue of the Fountains, west of the post office there. But I would not feel comfortable right here tonight giving you an estimate for the design and the construction. Let's, it will be considerably more to implement it.
Okay, so would, would the, would the council, would, would fellow council, I mean, I think we know that that area is dangerous, and I think we know that there needs to be some measure. Is there something that says that we have to have this study done before we were to take council action to do something with it?
I don't think so, but I would need to. And, and the town engineer, what we would need to do is take a quick look in the MUTCD in regards to pedestrian crossing and see whether or not we need to do a study to determine whether or not we meet any warrants for the beacon.
Yeah, and my, my concern, and I, I totally understand where Councilmember Spellet is coming from on this because it's, it, it appears to be obviously a no-brainer that it's dangerous there. We need to do something. We, we generally have an idea of what we want to do. But from a, from a liability standpoint, we really want to have a traffic engineering firm take a look at the locations, identify the fix, and basically come up with what the cost estimate is to actually put that in. So we're getting all that as part of this evaluation. And if, I have seen with cities, municipalities, going and putting in traffic control devices in locations and getting sued because they hadn't done a proper study or evaluation. Now, if, you know, larger cities that have the staff on board, they can do a lot of this in-house. We're not, we're not the cities of Scottsdale or other cities in the valley that have traffic engineering divisions that just do nothing but this kind of work. So the answer, in my opinion, the short answer is because we don't have the staff in-house, this is something we want to do to protect ourselves, but also get a good idea of what this would cost as well versus trying to take a shot in the dark as to what it might cost to put this in.
Okay.
Councilman Toll?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, in my opinion, this is not necessary in that we already have a crosswalk at Palisades going across. So really what we're creating here is a crosswalk in one of the busiest areas and intersection areas, traffic coming in, in and out of Starbucks, traffic coming into Safeway. There's, I believe, four entrances in that particular area. Plus, you have the traffic coming around the corner from Palisades. If we're going to do anything to, to have a more- If we're going to do anything to, to have a more safe environment, the Hampstead crosswalk is an example of what this potentially would be, which is probably one of the most dangerous crosswalks in this town. So I'm against, I'm against spending the money on this study. If you're going to spend any money, spend it on the Hampstead area, the crosswalk that goes from Palisades across the street where children are walking on a regular basis to get to that high school, and the traffic is incredibly careless going around that corner. And I see it because I, I live around the corner, I see it every day. And if we're going to spend money over here where Starbucks is, I, I think that we have an, we have other challenged areas that we need to focus on before we start allocating more funds to this type of new, new crosswalks that are going to create even, even worse traffic, in my opinion.
Councilman?
I have a question. Would this study come up with several different alternatives, or would it just come up with the one recommendation that it feels is the best, or are we going to be given options? How does that work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, they would give us a couple of different locations for the crossing and a couple of different design criterias for review. They would present those to the staff for review to pick the best location based on our local knowledge and expertise, and also the best type of system to use there. So yes, there, there will be options. It's not just one and done. There will be options included in this assessment.
If we were to examine Hampstead and Palisades in a separate study, I mean, would it be kind of around the same amount, do you know, or you have no way of knowing at this time?
Councilmember, I'm, and, and I certainly would need to talk to Councilmember Tollis to have a better understanding of what he's discussing. So that already exists.
If, if I may interrupt you too. So to Councilmember Tollis's point, usually mid-intersections or mid-street intersections like Hampstead are like the worst because people aren't necessarily paying attention when they're driving. It's not, there's not a traffic signal there to make them stop and so forth. Because of concerns, because of the accident that occurred there last year, or I think it has been almost two years ago.
Just the other day, there was another one.
There was another one? We went ahead and last summer, you'll recall, we went ahead and on the, the other side of the street, we went ahead and finished up the sidewalk that goes all the way down now to Golden Eagle, because it's much safer now, especially with those LED lights that are on the stop signs for people to see and try to stop at that intersection. We also resurfaced that crosswalk as well, correct? So to your point, we do acknowledge that there is an issue at that location, but we are trying to encourage people to use the, the full intersection at Golden Eagle and Palisades.
And to, to my point, that's exactly what you're going to create at Safeway. You're going to create the same situation that you're trying to encourage people to go to a, a traffic light.
I don't disagree with you. The only concern we have is people are taking the path of least resistance in this location. We see it because of the, the multifamily housing that's directly across the street from a, a shopping center. You don't necessarily see that because the other, the, the other developments are all, are walled in and the backs of the homes face the street on the mountainsides, side of the street. And then on the other side, yes, there are homes that do face the street, but my point is you don't have the density of people that live in one area that are trying to get to the commercial area. And right now, we have a lot of that happening. We see it, I see it all the time whenever I go to Safeway. I see people trying to cross from Four Peaks, or I think it's called, yeah, Four Peaks, right across the street. So, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's not ideal, but it's happening. So if we can at least get people channeled to somewhere that it's safe for them to cross, that's what they're going to identify with this. Is it safe? And then if it is, where, how can they design this in such a way that it?
I don't need you to, I don't need to spend ten grand to tell you it's not safe. It, it's not safe even after you put the walkway through, and that's my point. And that's where you have Hampstead. So you have a walkway there right now, and we're having accidents there. We just had one on Sunday, a two-car accident over there. So I just know that what you're going to create is you're going to create the, the, the impression that we're creating a safe environment there when you have an incredibly busy area. People should be encouraged to use the, 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 like you said, you're encouraging them to go down a Golden Eagle to turn, encourage them to go to the traffic signals. And if anyone wants to put some sort of a crossover there, then Safeway Plaza and all of those commercial entities that feel that it's in their best interest to do that, then write a check to the Town of Fountain Hills and let's, and figure out how to do it.
Councilman?
You don't hurt.
I am.
I, I couldn't agree more. I, if we spend ten thousand dollars for a study to get a formal letter back with a stamp on it that says, "People should walk down to the corner to cross the street," I'm literally going to, my head's going to explode. I mean, it's, it's common sense. You don't need an engineer, you don't need a design firm to tell you that what we should do as adults is cross at the corner where there's a traffic signal. But I know that we always want to follow the passive, path of least resistance, and we want to, want to run across the street and play Frogger and possibly get clipped by a car. So I, I know it's ten thousand dollars, and in the grand scheme of the way we spend money up here, ten grand's not a lot, but I, if we could do this in-house or something, I just, I think it's just a waste of money when I think every single council member sitting up here knows that's not a safe area to, to cross. Common sense tells you to go to a stoplight and wait for the crosswalk, and that's what the study's going to show, and I think we're blowing ten grand.
Any other comments? Did we have a study before we put the, the flasher light on Hampstead? Do you know?
Madam Mayor, that is actually a holdover from when that location was a middle school. So the guidelines in the manual on uniform traffic control devices historically do not look at, nor do they consider, any of that type of signage or lighting for high schools because at that age, they should be able to make good decisions. So that type of lighting is actually a holdover from when that was a grade school or a middle school. And to the best of my knowledge, based on all of the research I have done, no, is the short answer to that.
Okay, so we made the, you know, we, we felt like we had the expertise to do that. I, I'm very cautious about feeling like we have expertise in these kind of things. If we, if we don't want to go ahead and do this, that's fine, that's our decision, but I am not comfortable if you're not comfortable with our staff making a decision of where and what kind of crossing device should be there. So, I mean, I'd rather say, you know, don't do anything than, I, I, I don't feel confident in what the result's going to be. So is ten thousand dollars a lot of money? Sure. Is it too much to spend to get a really reliable answer? No, but the answer now is then, you know, you don't want to do it at all. But I feel, I don't feel comfortable being a decision maker on what's dangerous and what, and what the solution is to that. Councilman?
Mayor, I just want to be clear that I don't believe a crosswalk in that section of that street, in that busy intersection area, is appropriate, period.
That's what I mean, yeah.
So I, I don't think we should be doing a study. I think if anything, put a sign out that says, "Use, use the crosswalk and don't jaywalk across the street."
Well, and, and again, there's, there are probably a lot of different levels of how we can handle it, but if you look at it that way, we want a walkable community. There's homes all down Fountain Hills Boulevard, and if they want to go to DJ's or something, they got to cross somewhere, but, you know, if they're way down on that end and they want to go to, you know, or Senor Taco or something that's over there, it's fine to do that, but to, to Grady's point, they're not going to. So how do we make that the most safe as possible? I'm not comfortable being the ones to make the decision of what's safe. If we do nothing, then that is, at least like you said, removes the expectation that there's a safe way to do this. Is that what we're willing to do? That's, that's what I wanted to bring up.
Grady, are we sure that this isn't a study that we're not able to do? I mean, it's not, it's, it's a large amount of money, but I mean, is this a study that our engineer, our town engineer is not qualified to make?
Our town engineer historically has relied on outside traffic engineers to do studies for the town, and this is something I don't want to put on him or, or our staff to, to do, because typically we just don't, we have a great town engineer who has a wealth of experience, a lot of expertise. He's more of a generalist, not a specialist, and, and traffic engineering is a specialty within engineering, just like a brain surgeon would be of, you know, being a doctor. You don't have a, you know, somebody else do brain surgeries. I'm not, sorry for that, it's kind of a stupid analogy, I'm thinking about it, but anyways, if the council's desire is not to do this, then I would just suggest that you remove this from consideration of this. This did go through before we even brought it to the council tonight, the council subcommittee on traffic and pedestrian safety, that's why it's before you tonight.
I don't think Councilman Tollis and myself in any way are saying that this isn't a safety problem. This is a definite safety problem. I mean, I personally have almost hit people running, darting across the street and had to do, you know, panic braking. But at what point does common sense, I mean, you have to have common sense.
Right.
And not crossing an area where it is so dangerous.
Vice Mayor?
I am on the committee, and I wasn't present that day. I believe that's the day I was, I was sick, but I don't, so I don't know what was discussed. But if it is that big of a problem, which I've also dealt with what you have, Councilman Spelish, but maybe we need to break that section up with a sign, and I know this is not the time, with a stop sign. Maybe this isn't the time to discuss that, but it looks like at least two people are not in favor with going forward with this plan. And I'm starting to jump on board with them.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Well, I, I mean, after this discussion, I mean, I have mixed feelings as well. I understand it's, oh, another study, and those have been lambasted for the last few years. I get that, ten thousand, I get that as well, but the, the council and staff are put in a position of legislating common sense all the time when it comes to traffic. I mean, we say, okay, we need stop signs here, we need just regular crosswalks over there, we need something else at Hampstead, and perhaps something is, is needed here. I mean, we, we've all agree it's an issue, but I think to just blindly say, oh, well, we have to leave it up to citizens and common sense. I mean, we could do that in a lot of situations, but we're, you know, I think we're put in a position of where we need to unfortunately spend money to help that common sense or help citizens make a better decision. I mean, that, that happens all the time when it comes to traffic and policing and that kind of stuff. So I, I don't think this is that unusual in terms of what we're being asked to approve, and staff has already said that they're not comfortable doing it on their own, so they're just asking for an outside study. And, yeah, I don't think the study's going to come back and say, well, put up a sign and just direct everyone to go down to the traffic light. I, I don't think that's what this study is going to say, but I, if it does come back with some options and some locations, I mean, I think we owe it to the citizens to, to look at that and examine it. I mean, we're put in that position all the time. I don't, I don't think this is any different.
Councilman?
We may have said this, but do we have any statistics to rely on in terms of injuries, deaths, mayhem, whatever you want to call it?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, we, we certainly have crash data that we keep for that street. I do not have that, and I have not pulled that report. This is, I've not spent a lot of time on this, nor has the town engineer, simply because we have a lot of other stuff we're working on. Once it's, if it's approved, then we will go back and look and provide all of those stats to the engineering firm. Short answer, yes, we have the crash data for this area. I just haven't pulled it to look at it.
Do the statistics also include injuries to pedestrians?
I would need to look and see, in some cases, I believe it would.
The town engineer was shaking his head that, yes, the injuries are tracked as well, deaths and injuries as well.
It seemed to me in making a decision, I mean, that would be an important part of this. Yes, it's dangerous, but how dangerous? You know, there, there are degrees of danger. I think we ought to see those statistics.
Well, if the Councilman just touched on something that we're, we're seeing in a lot of places, whether it's across from the skate park, Sunflower and Palisades, there are a lot of, of, of people who are experiencing what they feel are dangerous areas, either to walk or to drive. But to your point, if you probably looked at injuries, there, there may not have been any actual crashes there. So it's a, it's, it's kind of a dilemma that we're, we're all going through when it comes to trying to figure out what we're going to do about perceived dangerous situations in town. And fortunately or unfortunately, sometimes the only way to know that is to have an expert look at it, just like, you know, what we talked about with Daybreak or anything else, that when you don't have the, the expertise or the experience to make these kind of decisions. So do you go then now to this and say, it's worth ten thousand dollars to see if there's a way to make that area safer? Or do we jump to our own ideas and say, no, it'll never be safe, or it'll cost too much to do it? The knowledge that we would get out of a study like that would not go away. We would have it, and then even if we couldn't do anything, we would have, we would have the knowledge. Councilman?
I, I'm just going to reiterate what I said. You, you have existing crosswalks in this community that are, that are dangerous and that the crosswalks are there and that they're still dangerous. There should be lights where there should be crosswalks, and they should be in major intersections. This is the same situation where you have, if you go down Palisades and you're driving down Palisades towards Saguaro, you have people that dart across the street to try to get to Bash's, you have people darting across the street to get to the other side where Safeway is, where Bank of America is, the ATM, or Wells Fargo. It's, it's in that whole corridor, and you have major intersections with crosswalks with traffic lights that are monitored and that are safed. If we start to put these, these crosswalks and assume that because we are, we're limiting our liability as a town, I think you're creating more liability by doing it, and you're not doing it in a way that's going to be safer for the, for the, for the constituents. They should be going to the crosswalks that are there, that are already established, that are safe to, to, to cross. If they take a different path and they get hit, it is not the liability of the Town of Fountain Hills because they get hit.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Just a quick follow-up. We keep hearing the word "safe." I don't know how to define it. What is safe? What is unsafe? Not getting killed? Well, okay. How many people have been killed in this location? Again, I just don't see how you make decisions like this without having any idea how difficult the situation is at this location.
Well, if I, if I may, I mean, this, this is-
Well, but we can get there without doing the study.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I may, I mean, you're bringing up a really good point about the, the safety stats and, and accident data and all that. But again, because of concerns that we had over the last couple of years over some major pedestrian accidents in town, this, this council created a council subcommittee on pedestrian and traffic safety. So this was one of those items that got vetted first, so I understand what you're saying. So, I mean, we've been putting all these improvements at intersections such as the flashing LEDs. I mean, there's still going to be people that are going to still go through the, the intersections and not stop, and we're trying to make some improvements over on the, with the roundabout that's been identified because that's a, a major traffic hazard right there. So in any case, what I would suggest, because I think this has been really debated tonight, so I'm, I'm hearing a couple of things. One is, we need to probably take another look at Hampstead, so I think the staff and I will go ahead and take a look at that. We'll report back to the, the council subcommittee on traffic and pedestrian safety on that and, and see if we can get some direction on that. What I'm hearing tonight is that there's not a lot of support for this. So if the council wants to go ahead and, and consider this motion, but go ahead and only approve it as it relates to the CK group for the roundabout drainage improvements, we can always come back to this at a later time.
Mayor?
Councilman?
If we have a subcommittee and they've looked at this, why don't we have the subcommittee reconvene and look at the statistics and come back to us?
We, that's a very good point, and in fact, we have a meeting later this month. That, that will be a good point, and I think the staff will go ahead and will get Kenny, our GIS expert, to go ahead and run the numbers. So that's a good point. We, if- If the subcommittee chooses to come back after seeing the stats, then that's a good idea.
I'll abide by whatever they come back with.
Would anybody like to make a motion for this with just about the drainage, however you figure out to do it?
Okay, I'll move to approve Fourth Amendment, Professional Services Agreement, C-2017-087.4 with the CK group for the design of roundabout drainage improvements at the Avenue of the Fountains, La Montana Boulevard.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes five to one.
Thank you so much. We'll get to work on those things. The next is just council discussion or direction to the town manager? No? Motion to adjourn, please?
Second.
Here we go again. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.